Welcome to the Planning Board meeting of September 10, 2024. If we could all stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Tonight, the first thing we have before us is the purpose of this plan, an A and R, is to convey parcel A from Fernandez Brothers Incorporated to Charles N. Cole Jr. and Donna Marie Cole, assessors map 14, law 10-1, and located at 22 Walker Road in the Residential Agricultural Zoning District. Mr. Fernandez, may you care to speak a bit?
Good evening, Don Fernandez, Sfoddy Free North Main Street. Yeah, it's simple conveyance, trying to make that property a but what is currently Walker Road.
This is where your son just built the house, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Congratulations. Nice to have him on your property. I'll ask the board if anybody has any questions or any concerns.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. I almost thought that was Alexa.
It was.
Oh, it was? Oh, she didn't have any concerns?
No, I guess not.
Are you all set with this?
I'm all set.
You're all set?
I'm good.
Yep, I'm good.
All right. You're welcome.
That's it?
Thank you. That's it?
So you have a motion to endorse the plan?
I will ask for that now. And I will ask, would you have a motion to accept?
Quick question. This isn't going to be considered a buildable parcel? It's just going to be...
Connie, can you talk in your mic?
Is this a parcel? Is this a parcel in and of itself, or is it can be being conveyed to the larger parcel? Great. We don't have to identify this as an unbuildable parcel?
I can't hear you.
We don't have to identify this as an unbuildable parcel?
We do not.
Excellent. Then I will make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion second. Further discussion? Mr. Kowalski?
Aye.
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 And Kevin Robinson says aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make one brief announcement before we get too much deeper into some of my festivities? So, in the event that anyone in our viewing audience is here for a lot to be or not to be in Ricketts Pond, those folks have requested a continuance due to the absence of our, one of our board members, Alan, because we've got no associate member and we've got no Mullen rule. So if somebody misses a meeting, they can't vote. And it's a four-fist vote. So they need 100% of the vote. And so they have opted to take a continuance. So if anybody's in the audience who's here for that, I just wanted to let them know, not that the housing production plan and hearing from EverSource isn't scintillating good stuff.
Yes.
But I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not disappointing anybody who's hanging out to talk about Ricketts Pond.
All right. Anybody in the audience here for the request for Peter Sprague?
All right.
So seeing none, then we will go on and invite Mr. EverSource.
Yes, so we have Philip Burt, not Bert Philip.
A guy with two first names?
My son has three last names.
That's what everybody says.
Uh-oh.
My son has, my son has three last names, so I'm sympathetic.
Well, maybe you can shed some light on our concern on, for the most part, connections and why there are so many projects that come back to us looking for continuances because they're having the interconnection issues.
Yeah, I'll definitely do my best to try and explain that. So let me introduce myself. Philip Burt, do community relations for EverSource. So I have Carver, Plymouth. I live on the Cape. I cover the Cape and the vineyards. So I've got those 23 different communities. Prior to my time with EverSource, I actually worked in the town of Eastham in the planning department with our town planner. So very familiar with the planning board, zoning board process. So appreciate you having me here tonight and understand the questions. So I'll do my best to explain the process of what happened and why you're seeing the delays and why you're seeing the requests for extensions. And I'm assuming you're getting these requests on like maybe a parcel that had to come through for site plan approval or something like that, looking for a solar connection, maybe developed in an area that was maybe not preset for that or something like that. I'm not sure why they're coming to you for the, for the extensions, but that's my assumption. So it's sort of a, sort of a perfect storm set of circumstances. So if you go back maybe 10 years, when I think the solar project started to become more and more common throughout, really throughout the United States, but particularly in the Commonwealth, they were still coming to the utility and to the state slow enough such that when, when a project came forward, that project, that developer would actually pay for the upgrade to the system that needed to be done. So any interconnection that needed to be done, if there were enhancements that needed to be made to the system in order for that interconnection to happen, the developer took on that cost. And that was the way it was done for a really long time. The problem happened like within the last five years with such a rush of projects coming throughout the state, it became clear that it was kind of an unfair process. Because if you were sort of first in the queue in a particular area, you were going to have to take on the cost of improvements to the system. And then everybody behind you who would, you know, if, if you were a solar developer and you had one project going, and then another solar developer had a second project and they were essentially just second in line in the review process, they weren't going to have to pay for the upgrades to that system. So between the utility and Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities, they essentially called timeout to, to stop all of it, to review all of the process. So what, what EverSource did on our end is we started grouping the projects into different territories to, to get a sense, okay, so what needs to be done to the infrastructure in a particular area? And so, you know, this particular, you've sort of got Plymouth, Carver, Southeastern Mass is one, the Cape is another. So, you know, the state's kind of divided up that way geographically. And the utility, the entire infrastructure is being looked at to determine what upgrades need to be made from a, sort of like a hardware perspective to get everything working. But then also, how do we, how do we equitably put those projects into the queue? So we had to hold at the state until June. So essentially, there was a, a whole two-year period where they couldn't do anything. And so a project that would take probably a year just on its own without a halt to the process was delayed multiple years. So you could have a project that would maybe was in the queue in 2021 or '22 that's just now going to get its review process because of that delaying. So that's kind of how the, the process unfolded. And like I said, that just lifted like towards the, I think it was like the third week of June when that, when the state kind of gave the, the green light to start the process over again. And so I think the way it's currently going to be arranged is that those costs are going to be divided up equitably amongst developers, rate payers, so that not one particular project has to assume the cost of an infrastructure upgrade to the entire grid that then everybody else benefits from, but they're the only ones paying for it, so.
So is it, is it still going to be a first come, first served basis? Are you going to go back chronologically?
To determine which ones comes, come next? No. So I think what they, what they're basically doing is they're taking the, the scope of the project, the size of the project, and then matching those to what's, what ones can move based on our existing infrastructure and which ones have to hold until other infrastructure's been upgraded. So for example, in this particular region, like there's three substations now that are going to be upgraded, one in Plymouth, two in Wareham, that support this entire region. Any ones that don't necessarily have that large of an impact are moving forward. Some, it's a, it's a game of engineering, which I, you know, I'm not an engineer, so I'm not going to speak to it too much, but that's how they're, they're sort of putting them in the queue based on feasibility right now of what's coming and up. So we've got upgrades across the entire state that are happening now because of that. And then to determine where they can fit in and timing wise. So I think if you came to, if you came to EverSource now with a project, it would kind of just go into its regular status. It would just be in there, in the mix with everybody, is my understanding on it.
And I think quite a few of us, I know myself, are you leaning towards underground connections opposed to going above with telephone poles?
No, I don't think so. I don't think, I mean, I think a lot of municipalities are definitely looking for that. The challenge, I think, is twofold though on our side of it. So, you know, before I joined EverSource, it was pretty evident to me, it's like, well, why don't you just, why don't we just bury the lines, right? Like, why are we dealing with power outages and all this stuff? And there's obviously a cost factor that's involved with it, very expensive to do it. But then, so the other side to it is there's a maintenance problem that really happens with this. So one of the things I was unaware of before joining the company was the number, the frequency of just essentially pieces of hardware breaking, right? So the same way that like you might have to in your home, like replace your refrigerator or your washing machine dies or whatever, we have, there's parts on the poles that like they essentially break and it happens pretty with quite a bit of regularity. It's just stuff that isn't, just needs to be fixed, right? And so when any of that stuff is done underground, it requires completely tearing up the road in emergency repairs opposed to going up into a pole and quickly, you know, replacing a piece. They actually have to, you have to dig up the road, do all that, it becomes vastly more complex and expensive. So it's really a two-fold problem. My sense is, some parts of the country, you're going to see it. I think California is moving in that direction just because of the issue with wildfires related to, to the utility. But it's going to be a long time, I think, before you see that widespread in the Northeast just because it's such a vast network. I mean, thousands and thousands and thousands of miles of, of wire. So I think you might see pockets develop here and there where it's feasible, where it's not as cost prohibitive, but my sense is you're going to see it continue to be overhead.
May I, that's, just a brief question about that. So I'd heard anecdotally that it costs about a million dollars a mile to put your utilities underground. That seems like a very large number.
Yeah, and I don't know if that's true or not. Honestly, I've heard that number thrown around too, and I don't know. I do know that it's, all of these projects are extraordinarily expensive, like when we start breaking them down into, you know, not so necessarily so much a, you know, a small distribution thing, but anything that's larger scale, we're talking projects that are in the order of, you know, 150 to 200 million dollars, and that's doing them overhead, that's not doing them underground. There, it's very expensive. And the amount of, while I think it's intrusive during the time that, that the work is being done, it's not nearly as intrusive as it is when you actually have to dig up the ground and the length of time it takes to go through that entire process is just exponentially longer for us to do that. So it's just, it's super challenging.
Do I have any other questions from the board?
Yeah, a couple of questions. So with regards to the solar systems and everything else like that, everything having to have all these upgrades, how does this, how do the upgrades or changes that you guys have to make compare to putting your normal everyday power generator, nuclear power plant online? Why is it that the solar fields are causing such stress on the, on the infrastructure? To the power, power infrastructure?
Yeah, yeah, I understand your question. So, so it's sort of twofold. So with respect to the first thing, like if you, when, if a larger scale power plant were like being brought online, there definitely is large-scale transmission work that gets done with that and distribution work, so, and substation upgrades. But with respect to solar, the, the trick with it too is that there's a vast amount, because the development's happening so fast, there's a vast amount of power coming back into the system. But the trick with solar is that there's a curve on the usage, so, excuse me. So during the middle of the day, obviously, you're getting a spike in, in
Generation.
Generation into the system, right? And on the downsides of those curves, morning, afternoon, evening, night, you still have to have the, the system set up to be able to move power once the solar power kind of drains out of the system. So it requires tons of upgrades region-wide, not only to move the power into it, but then to be able to have the, the engineering in place to take power from like a nuclear plant or a gas-powered plant and push it back into the system rapidly and have it ready to go because they always have to be in balance. You can't have those two.
Right, right. So essentially, just, just to make sure that everybody understands is that during the day, essentially, we're running on solar, but at night we're running on standard gas-powered generators or nuclear power, whatever we have available.
Until someday where battery storage is, is really cost-effective, I think that that's the way it'll probably remain because, and for now, I mean, you'll have wind, obviously, offshore, you know, the wind farms that'll continue to be generating into the system, presumably if there's wind blowing or whatever, but you, there needs to be a balance. The system still needs to be balanced, right? So you can't just, at night.
So that's the, that's the type of upgrades that you're talking about?
So it's, it's both.
Power switching and stuff like that?
Exactly. And it's being able to manage all of that power that comes in during the day at the same time too, being properly distributed through the system so it doesn't essentially like fry the grid because you've got so much power coming in as these large solar fields get, because they can't, again, it all has to be, what's, what's going out has to be the same as what's coming in all the time. And so they have to be able to, they, you know, like our engineers have to make sure that that's managed properly because there can't be too much or too little of, of usage versus delivery, essentially.
Mr. Plan.
Yeah, and I know there's been a lot of discussion about the Commonwealth's goals for electrification and the, the goal of moving things to electric. I know I got a lot of side eye from my family when I suggested maybe we replace our gas stove one of these days with, and they went. But in order to provide enough electricity for those cars that we hope to build and sell and electrification of things, there's just not enough capacity in the grid. In addition, we have, and correct me, step on my line. In addition, we have an older grid that isn't been, you know, it's been maintained, but it doesn't, it didn't have a Marshall Plan to rebuild the grid in the advance. So we're essentially building the plane while we're flying it.
Right, yep.
Except the crashes are much, much kinder when, when those things go awry. So, so we've got a need, we've got a goal for electrification, but we don't have enough sources and we don't have enough wires essentially to carry them effectively. And as Philip said, initially, when someone came in with a, with a, with an interconnection agreement, EverSource gave him a bill, like, yeah, congratulations, here's $139,000 upgrade to these lines for us so we can, this power can get from, from here to there. So I think that, taking that time, as annoying as it's been for lots of folks, is, you know, likely, likely discovered, we should have been out this probably earlier.
Yeah. And to your point, the state just, within the last two weeks, approved our electric sector modernization plan, which isn't just EverSource that submitted one, all the utilities had to in the area, to do exactly what you're talking about, which is basically modernizing the grid. So across the entire Commonwealth and the next, to meet the Commonwealth's goals, the state has very ambitious goals for essentially being carbon neutral, which I think is 2050 is the goal. So in order for that to happen, they came to utilities and said, hey, here's our goal. How do we, how, you know, how are you guys going to help us get there? And so the utilities came back and said, okay, and so they developed a plan. And those just went through the state for approval. And that, that process is going to be quite impressive to watch in the next, you know, 15 years, really, the amount of infrastructure that's going to need. Same way you make, you make reference like the Marshall Plan, it's like, you know, we, just like our, our bridges, our water systems, our sewer systems, utility, all of our infrastructure, a lot of it's aging and it needs to be fixed. And so we're going to have projects going all over the place, increasing transmission lines, substation improvement, substation growth to make this stuff all work and just to fit our, just our regular growth. It's not even just specific to, you know, renewables. It's also just, we're not the same as we were 50 years ago with our electricity uses, just different in our homes. So there's, there's a lot of work to be done.
So one more, one more thing real quick. What, what kind of a timeline are we looking at to have everything to the point where these projects can start moving forward and, and meeting their interconnection goals?
So I know that, so I spoke to our, one of our representatives who's responsible for this, sort of this aspect of, of what EverSource does. And I know that this region, this particular part of Southeastern Mass, so Carver, Plymouth, are coming into our review like now. So we're actually, they'll be setting up within the next, I'm hesitant to say week, so I'm going to say like months, but I was told weeks, so I'm going to say months. There'll actually be weekly calls with all the developers in this region who have projects in the queue to let them know where they stand, where they're going to be going. And then essentially, Ever, we're doing this in Marion and Fairhaven right now too. So basically, once a week, we meet with all the developers who have these projects in the queue to keep them up to date. I think most of them you'll see starting to move forward within the next six months, we, I guess, not completed, but getting going again and hoping sooner.
Getting their approvals?
Getting their stuff, yeah, exactly. And getting, you know, getting construction started and all of that stuff. For some of them, they're done, you know, just a hookup in some cases, so it depends.
Okay, so the, basically the, the substations and the, the different areas that are managing the, the, the interconnections, they're closing in on the final stages of being updated or?
So I think there's kind of two things happening in tandem. So those, so those substation upgrades for this particular region, I think are, they're planned for completion by like 2026. So that's a different, that's like, they're, they're kind of piecing these things together to make sure we can kind of make it all happen at one time. So they're going to simultaneously be upgrading substations. They're not, they don't have to happen in a vacuum on their own. So they're going to be making sure that they can just kind of, they'll take the projects they have in the queue, figure out which ones are, are best suited to get online now, which ones are going to need a slight upgrade, which ones need a massive upgrade or whatever. And that, that's how they're approaching all the regions. So, and Marion Fairhaven, that was sort of, I use that because that's, that was a group in our system, got approvals earlier, so they're already up and going. It's not that any one particular, it's like, so if you use the Cape, for example, there's, there's over 20 substations on the Cape. It's not that any one particular one needs an upgrade before a certain project can come online. It's looked at holistically. So it's, it's, you know, we can, we can balance these things, it's just that overall upgrades need to be happening. So they've identified certain, certain substations that if we didn't address soon, would be a serious problem. It's not that necessarily to get any one particular solar on a particular substation needs to be upgraded, if that makes sense.
Are there any large projects being planned in the town of Carver? I know we just put in a second main line through Carver.
To be honest, I don't know. I don't know. I didn't look and I, I haven't reached out specifically to, you know, transmission projects or anything. I know that there's, there's Plymouth, I know Wareham has a couple, we've got several on the Cape. And I know that there's obviously the battery storage facility locally, but I don't know about any large-scale upgrades coming that I'm aware of.
So two things, the Marshall Plan was actually not a plan for today, but that was the plan the United States had to rebuild Europe after World War II.
Yeah, I know.
I just wanted to make sure people, oh, they weren't Googling Marshall Plan and go, this doesn't have anything to do with electricity. The second thing is with the, the wind leases in, in offshore, there are a lot of people looking for landing areas for their cables and things like that. We've had conversations with a few folks, both when I was in Falmouth and at the time I've been here, about the potential for using right-of-ways in order to bring transmission lines underground from essentially the beach, the ocean, up to substations, including here. So it was a private company that's just looking at their options and things like that. So we've had a couple of conversations with folks. So, so like I said, electrification moving forward, there's a lot of money being spent out offshore on wind and that electricity's got to get somewhere. And so it's going to make landfall in places like Barnstable and Falmouth and Brayton Point. And those lines didn't go north into the grid.
Anyone else have any questions? Mr. Bird, is that it?
That's it.
Philip Bird?
Yes. First name Philip.
While we have him here now. Anybody in the public like to ask a question?
Steve, you got to come up and
Come on up.
Steve Ward, 46 Mile Standard Drive. I'm just curious.
You've got your proposal. I know, I know you, I know you love yourself.
I do that with you, Tom. Just wondering why there needs to be four telephone poles all close together as you go into the solar site?
Yeah, so I really honestly
Could you restate his question? So is it so are?
Yeah, so I think his question was, why does there have to be four poles so close together? And I'm assuming he's not referencing double poles, I'm assuming he's just talking the distance between them. So every time that these are designed, there, there's a set span that they're allowed, distance between them that they're allowed to go depending on the height and type of the pole. So though, obviously, the larger, the stronger the pole, sort of the more intrusive that pole becomes, but the longer the distance you can have between them, smaller ones, you're going to have them closer together. If he's, excuse me, if he's referencing double poles, what you'll sometimes see, you'll see in Carver, you'll see in every community in the state, unfortunately, is you'll see what are called double poles. You'll see an area where maybe there may have been a car accident, someone hit a pole, and EverSource or Verizon will come out, fix, replace that pole with a new pole, so you'll actually see two poles sitting like right next to each other, get the electricity flowing again, and then the other utilities have to come back and move like their fiber optics, move communication lines, Xfinity, that kind of thing. But I'm, I'm assuming he's talking about the distance between them, but.
I, I think it's more with the interconnection point from the solar fields to the grid itself.
Oh, no, I, yeah, I wouldn't be able to speak to the engineering on it, so I don't, yeah.
So Steve, you got to tell them who you are when you get on the mic.
Steve Ward, Miles, 46 Mile Standard Drive. So driving down Cranberry Road, just so you can have a little reference, the Crane Brook Bog's on your left, there's a solar site way out back, and there's a, from the pole on the street, there's about 50 feet between that and the next pole and the next pole and the next pole. And I just, it just, it just doesn't look great. It seems like you could probably drop a line underground, have a box right there that solves that problem. And I would suggest if that's at all possible, I'd love to see it.
I appreciate the comment, trust me. But I really honestly, with the engineering on them, I don't, I can't answer any specific location, but I understand the question.
Anyone else? All right, well, thank you for your time and thank you for coming.
Yeah, you're welcome. I appreciate it. Thank you. It was nice to meet you all.
Thank you.
We'll see you soon. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, I believe we have the housing production plan update from Serpent.
Hi, everyone.
How are you?
Good, how about yourself?
Good, thank you.
Tom, can I plug in?
Oh, absolutely. That's, cable's right there for you. Let's get you to
Awesome. Thank you. All right, well, I am Chris Welch with Serpent. It's nice to see you all again, here to just provide some updates on your housing production plan. I'm kind of going to set the table for you folks about the survey that we had put out that was recently closed. So I'm going to give you some general information as well as some like key points that we had found from the survey as well. So just a couple general notes from the survey consisted of about 32 questions. It was open from May 30th to September 4th. We ended up getting about 170 respondents, which is excellent for a town of this size. So you can see that 92% were homeowners and 60% were over 55 years old. Just quickly, going through these questions, feel free to stop and ask questions at any point. Just as a point of reference, this is one of the questions that we had asked on the actual survey. If you have trouble reading, I'm more than happy to send this through Tom to the board as well. So this first question, how important do you feel it is for Carver to have many different housing options at different price points? We can see here that about, I want to say 38%, believed it was at least very important and also extremely important. We can see there also the somewhat important, which I kind of count as like a neutral, sits at 28%. This other question, do you feel Carver's current housing stock is meeting its community's needs? We can see here that about 37% at least agree with this statement, 24 are neutral. And I want to say 27% at the very least disagree with this statement. The next question, do you feel there are enough senior housing options in town? See overwhelmingly 45% say yes. Very interesting, especially since the demographic of the survey was 55 and up for the most part, as well as homeowners. Do you feel there are enough housing options for veterans in town? We can see here, sorry, I apologize, didn't have the percentages on there, but we can see it's about 45% say no. Do you feel there are enough housing options for younger residents, recent graduates, and individuals living alone? We can see this is hovering at about 50% no. Also very interesting considering the demographic. And just moving along. Are you concerned that you or someone you know will not be able to live in Carver now or in the future? We can see that it's actually dead even, at exactly, I believe it was 70 respondents said yes, 70 respondents said no. So it's interesting that about half the respondents were saying that there is some concern about their ability or someone that they might know's ability to remain in town. So just moving along, something to note is that the idea of kind of like the perfect price for a starter home in Carver, people kind of perceive should be around $315,000. And like I said, if I'm going too fast and you have questions, feel free to stop me. Like I said, very brief. So on here, we had a question related to what other housing-related opportunities would you support? For those that can't read on there, because the text is very small. We had new scale, or sorry, new small-scale development, which appears to have the most strong approval, followed by new medium-scale development. I'd say probably the next most approving is production of cooperatively owned mobile home parks, which makes sense in the context of Carver, considering roughly 18% of your housing stock is mobile homes, manufactured homes. Which of the following age-related housing options would you support? Let's see here, so age-restricted subsidized housing, 50%. Construction of homes appropriate for downsizing, 48%. And programs to support aging in place, so that includes like housing modification, roughly at about 60%. So this question, we kind of prompted respondents to look at this set of images and their contextual examples of small houses in the region. So we have a bungalow, Cape-ish, and cottage type. And the reason I kind of pulled this information was it was definitely the most approved-of type of housing in the survey. So I definitely wanted to make note of that, and it will kind of come back into our draft goals and strategies that I'll discuss as well. So according to respondents, definitely the size and style these folks tend to be approving of. We can see here that I want to say over 50% approve of the style, and also over 50% approve of the size. At the very least, the yellow in there is neutral. Here's another example, but this is focusing more on senior housing. So definitely the most approved-of housing type are the cottages there, followed by the townhouses. Folks were not very approving of apartment-style assisted-living facilities. And like I said, wanted to keep it brief, but were there any questions on the kind of main points of the survey?
Say small-sized houses, but is that one, two, three-bedroom? Is it based on square footage? I mean?
For sure. I think the, it's a bit of both. It's most likely based on square footage, just based on the images. I don't think those types of small houses can accommodate like a three-bedroom or something like that. But I think in terms of the questions, it's more looking at, do you approve of like the kind of style and the general size of it, right? So it's not looking specifically at, are you approving of the square footage or the interior?
Did you give an idea of the size of it?
Do you mean in the survey?
Yeah. 800 feet, 600 feet, 1000 feet?
We did not, no.
Okay.
Yeah. Like I said, it was more focused on the style and like the exterior size and stuff like that. Any other questions?
Mr. Plannin, do you have any questions?
I do not. Chris and I chat a lot. I want them to have a chance to chat with you guys, so. And not that there's anything wrong with Chris and I chatting, I think the folks at Serpent have been very good to work with.
And Tom, did you send them the draft goals and strategies?
Yes, everyone has a copy of the draft goals and strategies in their packets. I emailed them to you as well.
Excellent.
If you want to talk a little bit about how those came about?
Yeah, of course. So we were trying to be mindful of being contextual for Carver and mindful of the fact that this is a housing production plan update. That's why we were very set on having about five to six strategies on there. And a lot of those strategies kind of came about from discussions with Tom and also from our survey results. So if we want to just get right into it, let's see. There we go.
So you can blow that up and make that text a bit clearer.
Yeah, of course. So our first strategy, implement key zoning amendments to support new SHI-eligible housing The note's kind of talking about starter home zoning through 40Y, clarifying portions of zoning to reduce barriers to building multifamily housing in key areas, and incorporate a true retention bylaw into residential zoning where appropriate. Excuse me. That first note, the starter home zoning through 40Y, that really came about as a result of the survey results with respondents essentially saying that they feel there isn't inadequate stock for first-time home buyers in town. So that's why we figured we would put that kind of section on there.
Yeah, real quick. Is this something you guys are telling us that is going to happen? Or is this something that you guys are, is this just a recommendation to the town? Because on the receiving end of it, it sounds like you're coming in here and telling us that this is what you're going to be doing.
Let me preface with, these are recommendations. These are not Serpent telling you folks what you should do. This is merely based off of, like I said, our observations from responses on the survey as well as chatting with folks. So this is definitely a part of the process that we would love feedback from the board. So if you see anything that you don't think particularly fits in with what Carver is attempting to do with their housing stock, this is the time to make a note of it, certainly. And if we had missed anything, this is also the time to kind of raise that as well. Like I said, these are recommendations for the town that Serpent has produced on our end so far, and we're hoping to get feedback from you folks now to refine that, and hopefully those will end up in the final product of the housing production plan. Yes.
What do you mean by starter home zoning through 40-year?
40Y.
40Y.
So I believe chapter 40Y is legislature that the state had passed that doesn't have too much guidance yet, but essentially it's going to help to eliminate barriers for first-time home buyer, like home construction and development and stuff like that. Like I said, guidance on it is still in the works. But that type of kind of zoning tool, like I said, kind of fit with what respondents were saying in terms of like, we're looking for more types of homes that fit for first-time home buyers or recent graduates and stuff like that.
What would you consider as starter homes?
Probably smaller size, I want to say under 1,000 square feet, one-to-two bedroom, stuff like that.
I'd venture to say whatever you can build for $335,000, if that's what folks thought. And I don't know how people decide. And square footage is hard to visualize for somebody to say it's a 900 square foot house. But yeah, I think that the starter homes, you think about, where did we grow up in? I grew up in a cinder block ranch. We had an upstairs, there was three stairs that went up to the upstairs part. So, you know, simple working folk, no fancy Cory and just, you know, a place to live, place to build some equity, place to get into a house and build your family.
Yeah, and I think that's where the kind of small home housing type that we had in the survey kind of comes into play there, because that kind of fits the mold of like what someone might be looking for in like a 40Y and stuff like that.
The next statement says, clarify portions of zoning to reduce barriers to building multifamily housing. Could you be more specific?
So I think essentially that is just going through the zoning and trying to tweak specific aspects of it that are causing barriers in town that are not allowing for the construction of multifamily in areas where you guys would like to see it, if any. But does that kind of answer your question?
I'm curious what portions of the zoning we need to clarify, because I know we have
village zoning and we have preferred development areas and... So I was curious. I know we just went over, changed a bunch of zoning to accommodate smaller village use houses and such. So I'm curious as to which portions of zoning you were specifically referring to.
I think this is something that we're more looking for feedback from you folks. So in terms of like, like you said, there were some recent actions that were taken to help eliminate those barriers, and that's excellent. But if there was anything that you guys wish you could have done or something like that, that's the types of areas that we're looking at to clarify and improve on.
Well, getting the developers to build the smaller homes is the problem. Getting them to build one in two-bedroom houses, because I know I personally would support one-bedroom, 55 and older, and two-bedroom houses. But because of our lot sizes in this town, which is necessary to separate our septic and our water and keep everybody healthy, the go-to is a three-bedroom, two-car garage house. So how do you feel that we should entice people to come in with the smaller two-bedroom or?
Yeah, certainly.
Starter homes.
So I think that's where the potential 40Y district, and like I said, this is just a recommendation, not forcing you guys into this or anything. But essentially, with this potential zoning district, it would be more conducive for a developer to build in that area, just because the zoning makes it easier for them to do so, if that makes sense. So like, just creating an appetite for it in the first place.
Now, is 40Y just going to be an overlay district?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, I think that it does take the form of an overlay.
Yeah, I'm not as familiar with 40Y as I am with 40R, but typically these things are overlay districts.
Any other questions on this first strategy?
I have a question.
No, go right ahead.
You had asked the question in the survey about the cost, what people feel the cost should be. What is your estimated cost, do you think it should be, for the smaller homes? Do you have any information on that?
I don't professionally. I certainly do personally, as I fall into that demographic of a first-time home buyer. I recently bought my own first home. But that's something that we can certainly like look into as a part of it.
I mean, everybody wants it to be a certain price, but realistically, you know, like Connie had mentioned, it's, you know, it's difficult here to do that, and builders don't want to come in and build a small house because they're not making any money.
Certainly. And there's definitely like barriers as well in terms of infrastructure that's preventing that type of work as well, that need to be considered. But that's definitely something that we can look at in terms of what kind of work has been done on 40Y so far. Like I said, it's a pretty recent, or pretty recent legislature that's been passed. But I mean, everyone would prefer for these types of homes to be on the lesser side, right? To allow that buy-in.
In a perfect world, everyone would like everything.
Exactly, right?
But, you know, it doesn't work that way.
In a perfect world, we wouldn't have a housing production plan because everything would be solved already, right?
Yeah.
So what is considered affordable housing in the town of Carver? $375,000?
I'm not really sure. I think that could, I could speak a bit more about it in terms of looking at cost burden data and stuff like that. But I don't think we can quite extrapolate, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I know just looking at Carver's cost burden data in terms of the, and for folks that don't know what cost burden is, essentially, a person will provide a certain amount of their income to pay for basic living, a mortgage, rent, stuff like that. From my understanding, from looking at Carver's data, and mind you, I haven't looked at it quite recently, but the number of folks that would be considered cost burden was fairly high among renters, for example. But I know also, too, the renter population is much lower in Carver than it would be in a neighboring town, right? I mean, the survey kind of speaks to that as well. A majority of the folks that took it are technically homeowners as opposed to renters. But yeah.
Now, wouldn't part of this cost burden be the associated costs of town services? And isn't that increased exponentially with the amount of residential buildings in the town?
I don't know if the HPP can tackle that directly, but I believe my understanding is that there's a connection between the lowering of prices for like public services as a result of an influx of residents coming into town and providing new taxes and that kind of thing.
No, it's just the opposite. Every residential development is a tax negative and costs the town money and increases town services by a substantial amount, and that's part of the problem. We're limited on our commercial and industrial space in this town, and now with the majority of land having, buildable land having been used, we're finding that our town services are having a difficult time keeping up with the new developments coming in, the amount of building that's coming to the town, because it adds to that cost.
And you kind of mentioned on the economic development side, I'm sure you guys saw in the packet that we also have a recommendation that's talking about kind of tying the two together in terms of housing and economic development, with the introduction of more mixed use as a potential avenue for more affordable housing.
I did see that, and I do agree with that, on the one hand, but then it kind of takes away the benefits that the town receives from retail and industrial tax burden with no tax benefits, with no residential to offset that. So it's kind of a balance. But I am in favor of multi-use developments, and I think the town of Carver needs to have a serious discussion about expanding some of their business and commercial zones.
For sure.
Were there any other questions on the first?
So if I can just circle back around to what's affordable? So affordable in SHI term that Chris used earlier is the subsidized housing inventory. In order to subsidize inventory, a house has to be offered for this price, and that price is tied to the median income of the Boston metropolitan statistical area. Interesting enough, next door in Middleborough, it is not. They have a different MSA, but we are in the Boston MSA, so our rates tend to be higher. So what an affordable house is what a family that, of four, that makes a total income of $111,850. So a family of four, total income $111,850 allows you to qualify for an affordable unit, income-wise. But at that price, how do you actually buy a house, if that's what you're tied to? Recently, and there haven't been any recent sales here in Kingston, but in, I mean, in Carver, but in Kingston, in my research, a three-bedroom house was recently offered at $319,600, and that included an $80 a month HOA fee. So in that Carver, but in Kingston, in my research, a three bedroom house was recently offered at $319,600 and that included an $80 a month HOA fee. So in that is the difficulty of affordable housing, in particular under the rules we have now, it's threading a needle. You have to find somebody who only makes so much money, but is able to qualify for a loan on a house, so they have to qualify for that. And then if you have assets to bring to the table, that doesn't count. So it is just extraordinarily difficult to hit that sweet spot. I know one of my admins in Falmouth wound up winning a house in the lottery. She qualified for income wise and she was able to move in the house, but she was getting a bump in her salary on July 1, 50 cents an hour, something like that. That 50 cent an hour put her over the cap. So they had to close before the first of July. They had to go break neck speed to make sure she qualified for this house. And after you're in, you're in. The price doesn't change, the price doesn't, the price doesn't change with the market, the price changes with the metropolitan statistical area's income. So it is like threading a needle to try to get somebody into an affordable house, which is why I always look at, you know, don't try to get as many units on the SHI as you can, as subsizing, try to create as many units as you can and as affordable units as you can. The market will help somewhat, but you know, there's not very many models I've seen that said, if we build a zillion houses, the market is going to get to the point where we're at X. That's just not how the, the demand model works.
So I, I didn't catch the number. What's the number for an affordable house on Carver?
Well, there isn't one because we haven't had an affordable house for sale for a long, long time.
Well, if the boss, if we're in the Boston housing, they must set a number for...
$319,600.
Is considered an affordable?
That's considered affordable.
We did have one five years ago. I don't know if you called that.
Well, the state considers a certain level, under a certain level of cost to be affordable. And I was wondering what that number was.
I remember getting that number from the state and it was about five years ago. Of course, I don't remember what it is exactly, but it was in that conservation subdivision in North Carver and the people had to go through the lottery. But the, the number was a lot higher than what you would expect it to be here in Carver at least.
Yeah, and like I said, because the whole, the math is based upon the metropolitan statistical area in. So like I said, and lines have, there's, there's a place, a line on a map.
Yeah.
And on this side of the line, we're in the Boston metropolitan statistical area and Middleborough is in, I think the Providence metropolitan statistical area, which has a, which has a much lower number.
And also my understanding is that is also to the benefit of Carver because the median household income is so like low compared to the, the Boston metropolitan areas that because of that, a large number of Carver residents have access to that potential avenue of affordable housing and stuff like that. Were there any other questions for strategy one before we move on? Yes.
So with regards to multifamily housing, are you, are we talking about multi-unit condos? We talking about apartments, multi-level housing? What, what are we, what are we talking about?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, I believe that multifamily is defined as anything over three units. And like I said, this is more of a recommendation, so you guys can kind of dictate right now in terms of the strategy, what kind of focus you would like. I believe we just put multi, excuse me, I believe we only put multifamily there as kind of like a placeholder for us to define for, in terms of like what the town would be looking for, like what types of housing in term, like specific types of multifamily.
All right.
Any other questions? All right. Moving on to strategy two, I would like to note too, I believe you had mentioned that there is a conservation subdivision in North Carver.
Yes.
So that note there is actually incorrect. So I believe that my colleagues in environmental that helped us with this strategy mentioned that there hasn't been too much development with the conservation subdivision. I just wanted to make note of that. But so for this strategy, amend the conservation subdivision, use to be more effective at attracting housing developments while incorporating Carver's open spaces and natural resources. So we kind of came back to this strategy because throughout the survey, there was mention of wanting to protect Carver's open spaces and natural resources. And in order to balance that with housing production, looking at the conservation subdivision seems like a pretty easy thing to do here. So some of my colleagues in environmental at SERPED had mentioned that some of the guidelines for the conservation subdivision could use some potential tweaking in order to be more compliant, or not, sorry, not compliant, but more in line with some of the recommendations made by, for example, Mass Audubon. And I believe specifically looking at increasing the, the open space requirement was one of the recommendations that they had given us. Is there any sort of questions about this strategy?
Could you provide us with a copy of the recommendations from the Mass Audubon Society?
Yeah, yeah, certainly. We could get that to you guys.
And maybe a synopsis of where we're falling short in regards to that?
For sure. Sorry, I'm just going to make a note of here for myself, but we can definitely provide that to you.
Didn't we just, didn't they just start construction on a conservation subdivision?
I think it's the 55 and older down, is that by the airport? Was that a conservation subdivision?
No, that's a, that's a more of a planned use development. A lot of conservation subdivision is like Lydia's Way. Basically everything we've approved in the last five years, I don't think we've approved a conventional subdivision. 85 Wentworth Road.
Yeah, I was going to say, the one we just approved, it's just being built.
Yeah. So yeah, Wentworth Road. So frankly, we haven't approved any conventional subdivisions, so I don't know how, I probably should have looked at that before we got to this point. But I don't recall a conventional subdivision being approved in Carver in a while. I think most of the things we've seen have been the conservation subdivisions and smaller lots and open space.
Gotcha. Well, it's up to you guys if you would like to keep that recommendation. Like I said, if you wanted to tweak it to fit a little bit more of what Mass Audubon's recommending, I think it's a good idea to keep it, but if not, we can certainly go back to the drawing board on that and, and kind of ax it.
I think it, I think it's important. I think we're trying to funnel more use to the conservation subdivision and I, I think simplifying it and bring it more in line with the Audubon recommendations because if it's, if it's conservation, then Mass Audubon should, should be making the recommendations if not, Mass DEP or EPA, so.
For sure. All right. So we'll, we'll definitely keep that for now. Were there any other questions on that strategy? As I kind of touched on earlier, coordinate new housing opportunities with economic development through zoning best practices such as mixed use. Were there any questions about this particular strategy?
Okay.
Yeah.
So with regards to the mixed use structures, I'm talking about constructing new stuff because we don't really have many places here in town currently that you would even be able to put an apartment above it, above a storefront or anything else like that. So what, what is, what exactly are they referring to with doing the mixed use and things like that and what, what type of housing?
I, I think it would be new construction to, to answer your first question. In terms of the particular type of housing, I think you kind of hit the nail on the head in terms of like apartments, it could be studio, one bedroom, two bedroom, stuff like that.
We did just work with SERPED to rewrite our transfer of development rights bylaw and that's again, unless there's some incentive to get people to use these bylaws, we're looking at three bedroom, two car garage everywhere in Carver. There, there, there's just, we don't have the incentive. They're just not in place because I'd like to see the conservation subdivision bylaw updated and I would have liked to see some incentives put in place to push development towards conservation subdivision, transfer of development rights and more localized housing, 55 and older and smaller, so.
All of that boils down to infrastructure constraints, right? So that's always the biggest thing.
Well, there's no town water for all intents and purposes and no town sewer, so again, acre and a half, three bedroom, two car garage.
For sure. That's, that's pretty commonplace, I think, throughout the region. Most communities in, at least the SERPED region are dealing with the ramifications of many not having adequate connections to municipal water and sewer. And I, I believe we do tackle and kind of raise that issue in our barrier section as well. So that's definitely something that's on our mind while considering all of this. Were there any additional questions for this particular strategy? No. All right. So we'll move on. So the next one, allocate funding from the CPA and pursue other funding opportunities to support accessibility modifications for folks who wish to stay, sorry, who wish to age in place. So we provide on here a list of some of the funding opportunities I believe the state provides, including CDBG, mass housing, the home modification loan program. So essentially the strategy just kind of walks through different funding opportunities that the town can pursue to kind of accommodate some of the desires of residents that had spoken in the survey that were looking to, to age in place.
I think the concern with aging in place is the, the rising of the property taxes and it's forcing people out because again, tax negative properties are being redistributed to all the residents, not just some of the residents or...
For sure. Displacement concerns are also a major problem in the region as well. For example, we're also doing a housing production plan at the same time in Westport and that's also a major concern, especially in their environmental justice community that is income based. There are many folks that are reliant on fixed income to remain in their homes and they're unable to afford it as a result of increasing taxes. Something else that we potentially had looked at for that town, there's a certain like tax program that the town was interested in. Essentially what it would do is, I believe it would take 100,000 off of the assessed value of a home, up to a certain amount. And essentially what that would do is it would lessen the tax burden on the lower amount of housing and kind of move that share and burden up the ladder to those who have higher costing homes and the like. So there, there are certain, certain strategies and tools that other communities have been looking into to try and mitigate those types of concerns. Were there any other questions or comments about this particular strategy?
So the mass housing home improvement loans, is that something that is going to be in favor of accessory dwelling units where, you know, people are adding on to their houses to afford their children to live with them or vice versa, their parents to live with them?
That's a great question. I, I'm not sure off the top of my head, especially with the AHA being passed recently and how that might tie into their particular program. But that's definitely something I can look into as well for you folks. My understanding of it as of right now is a more aging in place, home modification ramps, you know, making it easier to live in the current space. So I'm not necessarily sure if it also would include ADUs, but that's definitely something we can look into.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the strategy? All right, moving on. In conversations...
You went blank.
Oh, we're done. Don't know why. Sorry about that. See if it comes back up.
Just checking.
Oh.
That's me and that's you, desk floor.
You try and plug it and see if that works. Oh, had it for a second. Sorry for the folks in the back who aren't able to see, but...
Bad output.
You've got an image on your laptop on this one?
Yes. I, I could kind of walk through with folks right now and anyone in the back that's interested, I can kind of...
If you like, you can join me over here with your laptop.
Oh, sure, sure.
We can just plug you over here. That's the issue.
Let's share my plug, but not my coffee.
There you go. All right. So our final two strategies, investigate opportunities for adaptive reuse to redevelop underutilized municipally owned land and buildings. This strategy kind of came about from discussions from the ongoing priority development area priority, preservation area plans that SERPED's been kind of undertaking with our communities. So that's kind of why this strategy was developed. I believe in, in those conversations with the town, a couple of areas were flagged in particular that we're looking at for potential adaptive reuse. And if you folks have any insight into specific examples as well, that's something that we're looking for and want to explore with the strategy if you, if you guys want us to.
What do you mean by adaptive reuse?
So essentially it's taking a publicly owned or municipally owned structure or site and investing in it to become like housing of some kind or affordable housing.
Look out the window next door.
That's exactly what I was thinking about.
That's a perfect example.
So look out the window next door at the fire station, a perfect example of a municipal building, municipal site not being used for its original purpose and an opportunity to do something different with that. The, totally drawing a blank on my next point, but that adaptive reuse is, you know, one of the parts we got, what aren't using and how can we create more opportunities with them?
Yeah. Any other questions or comments for this? So our final strategy, explore avenues to convert third party owned mobile home parks into cooperatives. So this strategy kind of came to fruition as a result of Carver, like I kind of touched on earlier, Carver's substantial mobile home park, kind of a figure...
Well, two of the parks are already owned by the residents, I believe. South Meadow Village and...
All of them are cooperatively owned.
No, no. But, but yeah, two of them are.
Two of them. There's only one that I can think of that isn't, that's owned by Balboni's.
Oh, what about Pine Tree?
Pine Tree, I think Pine Tree is also part of association.
Is that the one up on Silva?
Silva's Waterview Village, that's owned by Balboni's.
Okay.
So there's only...
What about the one off of Federal Furnace?
Wareham Street there?
It's Wareham Street, yeah. That's Pine Tree, yeah.
That's Pine Tree.
That's privately owned.
Pine Tree and then further down the road is Cranberry Village.
So it might only be one. But yes, what are the benefits of going co-op? I know it, it keeps the larger corporations from coming in and gobbling up the land. They've done it in Wareham and they've forced a lot of people out due to pricing issues and things like that. So what benefits are there to going co-op?
So off the, sorry. Off the top of my head, I think you hit the nail on the head. I think that's the biggest concern of residents is essentially being forced out of their homes. And I think the biggest benefit of going co-op is to prevent that as well as to prevent any like price gouging or anything like that. In terms of the actual process, I'm not really sure what that would look like as of right now, but it's certainly something that we would like to explore.
Yeah. And do we have a strategy for converting any of these to SHI eligible?
Tom stopped me a few...
Not over the legislature's dead body. As I've talked about before, my professional...
And do we have a strategy for converting any of these to SHI eligible?
Tom stopped me a few... Not over the legislature's dead body. As I've talked about before, my professional organization, the American Association, American Planning Associates Massachusetts chapter has been working on zoning reform in earnest for 20 years. And zoning is 20A, I mean 40A, and affordable housing is 40B. In that discussion about revamping the zoning for Massachusetts, we haven't even considered 40B because we know it's dead on arrival, because builders love it and builders spend more money than planning board members do on politicians. And so you're unlikely to see any changes for 40B. And one of those is that a mobile home is not eligible for the subsidized housing inventory. That's what the law says. And until there's enough people who decide it should be in the legislature, it won't change.
Right, and manufactured homes aren't considered either.
A manufactured home on a foundation's a house. It's a modular home.
Alright. So a strategy maybe to make these manufactured home villages, mobile home villages into a more permanent structure with that?
When your bacon arrives on wings, because I don't want to say when pigs fly, but you know, all things are possible, but in earnest.
Well, we're talking about subsidies and home modifications and home improvement loans and non entitlement communities. It might be the most cost effective strategy for this town to, to look into a strategy of that particular nature. Because we're at 3.1% currently and it's going down with every new house built.
We could definitely do some research on that and definitely tie it into the kind of strategy, strategy six that we have there to see if there's any kind of process or if there's been any kind of case studies on it already.
Thank you. No, I appreciate it. Anything you can do, because we're, we're really backed into a corner in this town when it regards to that.
Were there any other questions or comments for the strategy as well? And just generally for the goals and strategies, any, any comments or questions? No. So kind of next steps for this, I'll take your comments and questions back. We'll kind of work through it and refine where we need to in the strategies. If you, in the meantime, if you guys need, kind of think of any other comments or questions for these, feel free to interface with Tom and he will get that information to us. And I think we are going to begin writing relatively soon. There are sections that we've actually started writing already that have the information that we need, but in terms of the goals and strategies, we have not. But if you do have any more feedback for us in this regard, I would probably say let Tom know within the next two weeks, just so we can get going with this, so we can get a draft going for you guys. Were there any other questions or comments before I head out?
No, thank you very much for your time today and, and leading up to today.
Of course, and we always appreciate working with the town and thank you for having me tonight, guys.
Chris?
Yep.
See you later handshake. I just want, I didn't want to pick on you.
Oh, no, no.
Don't worry, don't worry.
Alright. Moving on. We did already discuss the application of Peter Sprague.
Well, we actually haven't voted to continue the hearing until a date certain. So we should take that up next week. So on the application, Peter Sprague requesting a special permit for site plan review pursuant to sections 2330C, 3104341 and 5300 located at 2A Ricketts Pond Road in the Spring Street Innovation District to construct a 7,400 square foot light industrial building with associated parking utilities to accommodate the proposed use. They have requested a continuance to our next meeting, which would be September 24th.
I'm looking for a motion to continue that to September 24th.
I will make a motion to continue the public hearing on the application of Peter Sprague requesting a special permit and site plan review for Spring Street until September 24th, 2024, 7:00 PM, Carver Town Hall, room number one.
I second that motion.
Further discussion?
Only that we will have the folks at Fesson O'Neil with us at that meeting as well. They were scheduled to be here tonight and when this came up, I told them to stay where they're at.
Cancelled due...
Yep.
Mr. Gaskin?
Aye.
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 Kevin Robinson says aye. Alright. Public hearing on the application of Victoria Gordon, Cranberry Country Driving School, LLC requesting a special permit pursuant to section 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 300 Tremont Street, suite number seven in Carver, Mass. Such as map 126 dash 36 dash one in the general business zoning district to provide driving instruction in class and through behind the wheel training. Are you Ms. Victoria Gordon?
I am.
If you would, come and put a plug in for what you'd like to do there.
Just as it, good evening, just as stated in classroom...
Go ahead with your name.
Oh, Victoria Gordon, to provide in classroom, virtual classroom and behind the wheel training.
For...
For driving ed.
I'm sorry.
I'll wait.
I was just gonna say, plug the business. I don't think there's any in Carver. We had one recently, a couple of years back that, that didn't make it. So we want to see you succeed. So, you know, don't be afraid to plug it. We're just here to help you out with this. Are you going to be the only employee?
Yes.
Okay.
So I've been a driving instructor for several years and it's been my dream to have my own driving school. And there's, according to the RMV, you have to take these certain steps and be certified as an instructor for a certain number of years and be employed as an instructor. And I have done that. And South Carver was my dream location. You have Rochester, Middleborough, Wareham right there. I'd love to sort of encompass all those towns, maybe Plymouth. You have 495 right there. And I just look forward to producing some safe drivers out there. I've worked in public safety for 15 years and I've seen a lot of bad stuff, heard a lot of bad things, bad drivers. And it's just kind of something I'm pretty passionate about, working with these kids and trying to get them out on the road safely.
So how many students do you expect to have in class at any one time? Or are you preparing for?
I, I think maybe a max of 20. I, I don't really anticipate that many at first. I, I don't know how it's going to work, but I'm sort of open to that. I see a lot of schools in the area with their classes are all full, so there's plenty of kids out there. And I think the space that I have will definitely provide for that. This is a good, it's a good space, but...
Do you know what the square footage is of your space?
A thousand.
Thousand square feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, so here's a, here's a beautifully crafted plan. We only, we only snickered a little bit.
Are those, are those desks?
So I had anticipated, I had set out to have the desk with the arm on it and they just, they fell apart. They did not come together very well. So now it's, has since moved to the six foot long table with the two chairs at each tables.
Okay.
But I, I did want to put in 20 just to say that's probably the most I would ever have in the classroom. But I do, I do, out of convenience for people, want to kind of swap and swap the virtual, because right now we still can't have virtual classrooms. And I feel like I can accommodate more kids that way, but just out of convenience for sports and things like that, I hear, have heard over the, the years on why they chose which school over what and out of convenience. But I'm paying for the butts in the seats, so I want to definitely have them in the classroom. But I figured, I don't know, I'm hoping maybe about 16 kids anyway, on average, maybe.
How many vehicles do you think you're going to have?
Right now, just one. It's just me.
You're not going to have a backup, just in case?
Uh, I, I, I need to stop spending money before I start making it. That's a great point and I would, I would love to have one.
You'd be out of work if the vehicle you had broke down.
Right, right. I am looking to build a rapport with a mechanic. I know I'm going to need to have one on standby, so...
There's one right behind you.
Yeah, yeah.
Mechanic right behind you.
He's very nice.
Yeah, he is, yeah. I didn't realize he was a mechanic. I knew, I thought he did the auto body stuff, but...
But I find being in business myself is always good to have two of everything.
Yeah, I totally agree.
On the event of a breakdown.
Yeah.
You know?
I mean, it's easy enough at this site to bring him a cup of coffee and have the conversation about, you know, creating a relationship.
Right, right.
Well, we want to encourage new growth in our town and this is an excellent opportunity.
Yeah, thank you.
We'd like to see you succeed.
Thank you, I'm very excited.
Excuse me, Sue, that's where you're going to be going out on the road with the students?
Not necessarily. That's probably a special case if I had to pick them up or meet them at school, typically from home or from their high school.
Good, good. I, I support what you're doing. I, I agree that this is a great thing for the town, but this is, we had something come in front of the board not too long ago and express a lot of concern about the traffic and the safety in that particular area. And I know for a fact that just last week, there was a, a very bad serious accident right there in front of 300.
Oh, wow, okay.
A head-on accident. Not to discourage you right there, I want to support this, but it's, that's, that's a bad area.
Well, it's, it's actually part of my lease that we won't do any actual maneuvers within the parking lot. And I agree, it's just too tight and it's, it's always bustling, it's always very busy. And as far as the pickup, I, I almost thought we'd meet maybe at Noria. It's much easier to get in and out of there than it is in our parking lot. Because there's a lot of foot traffic with the Dunkin' Donuts and everything.
Right.
I don't foresee much exchange happening there, other than when they're in the classroom, dropped off by parents, picked up by parents. But usually I, at least in my experience in the past few years, I pick kids up from high school, from their high school, excuse me, or from home on the weekends, kind of thing.
That's nice.
So more of the classroom will take place setting there opposed to you picking a student and driving them out of that area.
Exactly.
I think that's what Mary Ellen was getting at. She would prefer not to see the first time drivers or inexperienced drivers using that very dangerous area to learn on.
Yeah, right, right. And pardon me, I mean frankly, if I have to use the ladies room, I'm probably going to want to go there in a public space, but that's really all I see, kind of coming and going out of there.
Alright, well, do I have any other questions for her? Well then, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept this.
I will make a motion to approve, this is a public hearing, right?
Yes.
The application of Victoria Gordon, Cranberry Country...
Just point of order, or any comments from the general public?
Oh.
That was, that was my bad, because you never know, Ms. Judy or Steve might have something to say. So...
That was my...
We can, it was my bad, I should have asked for that first.
I will introduce my bad as well, in that your decision, your draft decision is actually three pages and there's just a front and a back, so I've got a draft decision put together.
So I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. I don't think we read the public hearing announcement, though. On the application of Victoria Gordon, Cranberry Country Driving School...
Oh, I did read it.
Oh, you did?
Did.
Okay.
Yeah, you did.
I don't know what happened to me, then I will make a motion to close the public hearing on the application of Victoria Gordon, Cranberry Country Driving School.
Second that motion.
Second by Mary Ellen. Further discussion? Mr. Gaskin?
Aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye. And now I'll ask for a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the application of Victoria Gordon, Cranberry Country Driving School.
And the second?
I second that motion.
Further discussion? Mr. Gaskin?
Aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Good luck. Thank you very much.
And that was your second, Mary Ellen?
Yes.
I believe there was a congratulations for Mr. Gaskin's potential position, state representative.
Thank you.
Will, will you be continuing on with us?
Until there's an issue, that's something that I'm going to have to discuss with the town planner as far as how things go.
Alright, thank you. And again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other member notes?
I do.
Yes.
It's football season. Carver Cowboys, first weekend was this weekend and they, looks like it was a successful weekend against Plymouth South. So, good for them. First home stand is this weekend.
Alright, thank you.
Starting at 10 o'clock for the Mites and progressing on from there.
That all takes place at the high school?
At the high school, yes.
Alright.
Come support the boys.
Good to know.
I just want to say school's back in session, stop for the school buses if the lights are flashing or the stoplights out. I witnessed an incident the other day and I just couldn't believe it happened, but I know it happens all the time, so it's something to be more aware of.
Thank you.
And to that effect, it is amazing, I saw a story on the local news station where they did a, maybe it was Methune, where they had cameras on the bus when the stop goes out to monitor, you know, how this works. And it was an insane number of people who just drove past the flashing lights and things like that. And this was in one study and so you multiply that by all the towns and you can imagine the number of people who, you know, you don't understand what people's motivations are, but it is not an uncommon occurrence apparently. Much my shock, I thought.
I know, I thought it was taught when you go to get your license, right?
Yeah. I saw, I might have seen the same one, but somebody passed it on the sidewalk. And that's just horrifying.
Wait, pass the school bus on the sidewalk?
Yeah, yeah.
Wow.
Well, the kids are already on the bus, they're not on the sidewalk. That's all that asphalt, all that asphalt out there, you got to use it for something.
It's like Death Race 2000 out there.
Mr. Planner, do you have any notes for us?
I, I do. I have the, the draft decision including conditions for the driving school that I'd love the board to sign tonight, because there's a 20 day appeal period and I know she, Victoria was a little anxious to get started because school's in session. So, so with those conditions, essentially hours of operation that she had talked about, that we didn't really talk about much here, but those are the information that she gave me about hours of operation and the number of students, the typical stuff about, you know, registering with their registry deeds and the fire department and the building commissioner, making sure that, you know, they do an inspection prior to the certificate of occupancy there. So those are the basic conditions, the basic of conditions. So from my perspective of my, my notes, we are in the midst of advertising for our associate member. The date of the applications closes, I think, on September 20th. The select board would love to have a joint meeting on October 1 with the planning board to appoint an associate member. I've heard back from a member, thank you very much, Mary Ellen, I call names out, but I just did, but I didn't call her real name.
I did confirm with you too.
Well, verbally, yeah, but, and so, so October 1 is that date that the select board is projecting for the meeting to, and when the date closes, we'll submit all the applications we received to the board, so you guys will have them in hand. So I got two available for October 1, we need three for a quorum.
Was it, what day is October 1st?
Tuesday.
I can make it. Do we have any applications?
I think I, I can probably make it as well.
I'll have to check.
We're going to do 7 o'clock?
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock? Thank you.
I will not be at that particular meeting. I will be on a plane to Anchorage to see my niece retire from the Coast Guard.
Excellent.
My late brother's...
I believe I have a right...
My, my late brother's, my, yeah. My late brother's daughter, my brother was a coastie for 20 years in Kodiak City, could catch cam.
Nice.
Flying fixed wing aircraft, find people out in the water. His daughter took the same tack and now that she's retiring, I'm sort of her surrogate, so...
Nice.
That's why our family vacation is the Pacific Northwest, so I leave the family for 48 hours and go to Alaska to say hurrah and then back to the lower 40. for 48 hours and go to Alaska to say hurrah, and then back to the lower 48.
Well, have a good time. Enjoy yourself.
I tend to, wherever I'm at, even here. Enjoy myself. So those are the answers we got, so October 1.
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock.
Here, meaning warm one.
So I got four. That's a quorum.
And did you say that we do have applicants?
I think, I think there's an application, but I don't look at things until we got them all in. So the 20th is the date that they're calling for, you know, applications to close.
Now, when it comes to this decision, and I'm just voicing my own opinion, I don't want to limit her too much, because I know after school and after work, and she might have adults coming in for classroom, and this might, I personally would have no issue with her having more normal business hours.
Well, this is what I ask her.
Right.
So I'm like, well, what are your proposed hours of operation? So she said.
On my personal opinion you can convey to her that any change to this shouldn't, in my personal opinion, shouldn't be a problem for me.
Well, if there's a condition of a special permit, to change that condition requires filing a special permit.
Yes, she'd have to come in again, so that's what I was concerned, that she's overly limiting herself.
So.
But it's what she wants, I'm just saying that if she wants to come back and change it, I don't have a problem with that.
I was saying if she wanted to do 7 to 5.
I think some people have to work, too, and maybe can't, you know, can't get a ride till their parents get home, or we have people coming in without licenses.
So you don't want to limit her to 3 o'clock?
Well, I just, right, so.
If there was a way to suggest to her to keep it maybe to 5?
No, if she wants to come in and readjust her hours at any point in time, I don't have an issue with that.
Okay.
I think she's kind of limiting herself a little too much.
So I will say it again, to amend the conditions of a special permit, you have to file another hearing notice for a special permit. So let's short-circuit that if you think that's how the board might be leaning towards something like that.
I think that, I don't see a problem with her, in the evenings, people have to work during the day, so if she wants her office hours to be 7:00 PM at night, I don't see an issue with that. Because from where I'm sitting, it looks like 7:00 PM, but.
That's a two.
I know, I turned her on to check.
Yep. So you're saying if you did something like this?
It's, I think, yeah, and I mean, she. I wouldn't have an issue with that at all whatsoever.
That creates an awful amount of flexibility.
I'm fine with that.
All right.
John?
Yep.
I'm fine with that, yes.
All right. I'm gonna hit the print key one more time. I'm gonna have you guys sign that while you're here, in addition to the A&R plans. So if you pull out the A&R plans you got in your book and we sign those, I'll be up with the decision in a minute, and we'll get that signed.
Just the plan itself?
In the clerk. Uh, yeah, the A&R plan, please.
So I believe we do have minutes, right?
Yeah, we do have minutes, but I don't. Oh, there you go. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of 8:13, 2024.
There's one of them, I think there's a mistake on it, but I don't have the minutes with me.
Okay.
Here, take a pass, Mike. You want to specify it before we approve it, so it can be changed?
I thought I saw something, too, that I didn't think. Do you have A&R plans?
Feel free.
No, he said we have to sign all the copies he gave us.
Oh, I think he put them over there.
Why doesn't he sign these? Why doesn't he sign these?
Yes.
And on the bylaws.
I believe that's what that is over there.
The bylaws over here, I just don't understand why he would sign these.
I don't know.
It's what we used to do.
Really?
We used to sign five copies and.
Yeah, didn't that what Jim Walsh would pass them out, we would have them in our, we'd each sign one and then just pass them back and forth.
So they just stay?
Some of them only need the bylaws, like a subdivision only needs the bylaws, because that adds multiple pages to it, but I think with the A&R.
You're having us sign our individual plans, correct?
Yeah, I've got the bylaw and about three more over here.
Okay.
Try to get eight, drop and sign at the weekend.
There we go, we want to each second. I'll pass this your way.
No, I'll walk over them, because I'm reading.
You already did them, Joe?
I did one.
There you go.
Kevin, it's this one. Can you read the vote?
Okay.
It says that Connie said nay, and I said nay, and it says unanimously approved by 2-0, but that would have been, we would have said nay.
All right, I'll bring that to Tom's attention. So Tom.
Thank you, I thought I checked that, too.
We're under page 7, first paragraph, we've got.
Give me a second.
We're talking about our notes now?
The minutes?
Minutes, yes.
So which minutes are we on?
So last sentence, Chairman Robinson takes a roll call. Page 7.
Which, so that's gonna be the 13th.
8:13.
Right. 8:13, page 7.
Okay. Chairman Robinson takes a roll call vote, and John Gasky votes aye, Krieger Shea votes aye, nay, Ellen Sedillo votes aye, Mary Ellen Williams votes nay, and Chairman Robinson votes aye, unanimously approved 5-0-0, so.
That math doesn't seem to work for you.
That doesn't work.
Fix math. All right.
Thank you for picking up on that.
Yeah, that was a good catch, because I glanced through them and I, but I'm reading it on a computer, too.
I was reading, well, I enlarge it on the computer, so.
And with that fix, Connie made a motion to accept the minutes?
As edited.
As edited, and did I get a second?
I second that.
Further discussion? Mr. Gasky?
Aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye. And we have, we have minutes of August 27. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of 8:27, 2024.
I was absent for that.
On the minutes of August 13, Connie made a motion to approve with the edit, and Mary Ellen seconded, and we're waiting on Mr. Gasky for a second on the August 27 minutes.
All right, so page 1, bottom paragraph, with regards to the reason for the delay, can we just put legal reasons or legal actions as opposed to calling out a specific group? In a, it's essentially disparaging.
Appeal? Legal appeal?
Yeah.
Legal action?
Legal action, legal appeal.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought we, I thought it was a bit over the top.
He didn't really get specific until he was pushed.
But you have to check with Ms. Williams and Mr. Robinson on that also.
So how would we like to state that so that we can?
Just that it was delayed by mostly legal appeals.
Can we do that, Mr. Planner?
Uh, the board's minutes are the board's minutes. The board decides what they're gonna say. If someone makes a statement, if it's not in quotations, someone could, you're so, you're not changing the nature of Mr. Opochinsky's statement, because it's not in quotes.
We're going to change it to legal action. Are we all in agreement with that?
I can't vote on it, because I wasn't here, but you don't want to hear.
Or legal appeal, yeah, legal action, legal appeal.
Hear what I have to say.
Yes, of course.
Even if I was here, I would have recused myself, so.
Yes. So we're just gonna strike that sentence to say, indicate it has been delayed through legal action.
Through legal action, all right.
All right, so, Mr. Gasky, I unfortunately need you to second that.
Oh, I second.
Further discussion?
Nope.
Mr. Gasky?
Aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Mary Ellen recuses herself, and Kevin Robinson says aye.
I was absent.
She's absent.
Yeah.
And.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, absolutely.
All right, so I got the decision for the driving school and a couple of the sets of plans for you kids to decide.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to adjourn.
Further discussion? Mr. Gasky?
Aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye. Good evening.